We are recording.
Okay, I want to welcome everybody to the Thursday, December 9th, 2021 Public Arts Commission Meeting, last one of 2021. Before we actually get into the agenda, first, we need to establish a quorum and then see if there's anyone from the public who wants to make comments on things that are not on the agenda. So I'm going to ask John to establish the quorum.
Okay, Chair Waldman. Chair Waldman is here. Let's see, Vice Chair King.
I'm here.
Commissioner Couture.
President.
Commissioner Corrigan.
Here.
Commissioner Moore.
Here.
And Commissioner Jan Gignan. Commissioner Jan Gignan is here. So all members are present.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, I'm here.
Okay. So we'll move on to seeing if there's any comments from the public on items not on the agenda, and I think we have somebody from the public. Marjorie, did you want to speak? Oh, you're on mute, Marjorie. Hold on, technical difficulty. There we go.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm Marjorie Law. I'm an artist, and I've lived in Los Altos for 54 years and went to the community center and saw your big wall that you're going to display art on. So I've been in contact with a few people. Monica Waldman asked me if I would talk to you about how you can notify artists that there will be art shows on the walls in the new community center, the art walls specific for that. And I have some ideas, but I'd like to know if you know the purpose of the art that you're going to display. Is it going to be for promotion of good art or promotion of Los Altos?
Well, we hope it's for promotion of good art of Los Altos and the community of Los Altos, so all two plus one.
Okay, because I understand that it would, they would be themed shows.
Correct.
Such as what does Los Altos mean to you? Well, okay, then I guess any artist that I know would not be interested in that specific a theme, because good art has to come from inside. And our shows do have themes, but they have very general themes like color harmonies, symphonies of color, things like that. But that's very specific, and I think it lends itself more to photography, maybe landscape painters who are realistic landscape painters and paint the area, or literature. But, so that's why I'm asking, what is the intent?
Well, the intent is to get the community involved and showcase the community, because it is a community center.
Yeah, well, community of artists. If that's living in Los Altos, or?
Well, the artists who live in Los Altos and maybe outside of Los Altos are welcome to submit when we have shows, and each call is going to be different and tailored to the actual theme, but.
Yeah.
It's, the thought is that it's going to be open to the community at large.
Okay, it's the same part that I guess I have a question about, if it's, if it's very specific and only involves.
I don't, I don't know that it's going to be, I mean, I think it may be as specific at that, but I think our calls for art will be in line with other art calls for art. We have several artists on the commission.
So Marjorie, I'm also an artist, and I, I go, I answer calls for art and I read bazillions of calls for arts. I am familiar with, you know, painting a broad enough brush with the text so that it's, it's flexible as far as what is submitted.
Okay, then I have a miss, because the thing that was quoted to me was, what does Los Altos mean to you? That's, that's hard to put out to artists who have things coming from within. Anyway, that's all, you know.
So we, we will be discussing a little bit later, the community center, and we'll be discussing our first real call for art. So if you want to stay on, that's fine, or if you want to just wait for the call to come out and then give us some feedback, that would be great.
What are you going to say, how you host it? Tell me that.
Oh, well, you want, no, I'll wait.
Okay.
I'll wait till it comes out.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much for coming.
Well, I, on second thought, did you, did you want ideas on how to disseminate the information to artists, but you seem to know how to do that, so?
Well, no, 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 I mean, we are open to any kind of information that you can provide.
Well, I'm sure you know about posters and, and postcards left in places like Gallery 9 and Viewpoints, even the Pacific Art League, City Hall, History House, Library, Post Office, you know, the Rancho Stores, whatever. So I'm sure you're familiar with all of that, and Foothill Art Department. And then there's the Open Studio Artist List. Okay, so that's all I have to contribute, really.
Okay, perfect, that, that is helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, as we are about to go into the agenda, I wanted to make a motion to move to the agenda items, because we have some guest speakers today. I wanted, they are number two. I wanted to move them up to number one, just to be cognizant of their time, if that's okay with people. Is that okay to do, John?
I approve.
Do we need to make an official motion for that?
I don't think we do. I think we're okay. If there's general consensus from the commission, then we can certainly move them up to number one.
The city council usually asks if there's anybody who objects. So you could do that.
Does anybody object to letting Arts Los Altos speak before we go ahead and improve minutes? Because I think they, they're biting, you know, chomping at the bit, so.
I don't object.
Okay, is there, is there any objection? Okay, I hear no objection. So Arts Los Altos, I've been told you have 10 minutes. The floor is yours.
Okay, hi, everyone. We have a presentation for you that John's going to share that we just want to go through, and we'll start there.
And Maddie, before you start, we'll hold our questions until the end, correct?
Okay.
Okay.
Yes. All right. So thanks, you guys, for, thank you, John, for getting us on the agenda. This first slide, this is our mission statement. This is our team of volunteers. We work directly with the artists in downtown Los Altos business community and property owners to achieve vibrant curated public art. Our art installations are funded with grants and private donations located on a private commercial property. We're fiscally sponsored by Intersection for the Arts in San Francisco. Next slide. These are our completed art installations, starting on the left. Mondalia, it's called Mondalia, the Assistance League Plaza, Floral Therapy on Main Street across from Red Berry Coffee. The upper right is called 200 Main Street, an inventory of time and place on the Satura Cakes Building on Third. And then the lower photo is Nevicata, which is a lamp purchased by Arts Los Altos on loan at the Chamber of Commerce. Next. Next. So our most current installation is called Be the Change by Cameron Moberg, an artist from San Francisco. He just completed it last week. It's an homage to the monarch butterfly and the California poppy. And if you haven't seen it, you got to check it out. It's on the Assistance League Building on Third Street. And State, it faces State. And then coming up, we're doing an augmented reality art piece in this paseo that's adjacent to Akane. And Akane, or augmented reality means that you use your app and it creates the images to have movement, and it will have lighting and technology at nighttime. We'll also have projected art on the ground and on the wall adjacent to Akane with moving three dimensional hours. Next slide. This shows the map that we want to share with you guys, the Third Street Art Walk Vision. And this is something that we want to collaborate with you on. Next. So the Third Street Art Walk Vision is an idea that we thought we could collaborate with the city on, because there's many, many locations for sculptures. So if you stop at the, if you start at the top left, this is looking up Third Street, right at the State Street Market on the left, where I think this is on your agenda tonight to possibly place sculptures right along there on Third. And then on the right is the second photo on the top, across the street from there. And then as you move up the street, there's places where you go into the parking lot, that's the third one on the right, and the bottom left is in front of the dry cleaner. And across from the dry cleaner, the green cleaners is where the orange bike rack is, there's plenty of spots for sculptures. And then as you move up Third Street, that is in front of Bank of the West, where it's the corner of Main and Third. Next slide. And this is the corner of Main and Third by Chase Bank, where those Christmas tree are on the left are places where sculpture could go. I think the city owns the bench on the right, which is also in front of Chase there in the plaza. And we talked about maybe getting some cushions for the bench, or we threw in this picture of a painted bench, which is always, could be a cool community art project. Next. And then this is, as you move around the corner from Chase, there's some great spots for sculpture in front of the, the little plaza there, and then the lower one where that Christmas tree is, also could have sculpture. Next. Okay, then, as you cross the street at Main and Third, this corner building that has stone, there's a little entryway there. We put this little bench in there, because there could be some cool benches along there, too. This is by Colin Selig, who does upcycling with propane tanks, and he creates these really beautiful modern benches. And just another location for sculpture right there at the corner. And the center one at the bottom, there's kind of a useless bike rack right there, and there could be some beautiful sculptures there. We're hoping to get to paint the utility boxes behind there. And then just another place, before you go into parking there on the right, the very last bottom right is for sculpture, too. All right, next slide. And then these are just two more parking entries, spots across from Schaub Bank. And then in front of Schaub Bank, there's plenty of spots at the entry, and then as you, the bottom right one is where Akane Restaurant is, and that would be to the right of the paseo project that we're going to do, and it'd be awesome if we could get some sculptures in there. These are just ideas of spots. All right, next slide. And this is, to the left of Akane, on the building there, could have sculptures along the front side. And then below it is, across the street, where there's also, you could put sculptures between the trees along there. Next slide. And so this is looking the other direction on Third Street from Whitney, looking down the other way, which is a beautiful gateway entrance. And the bottom right photos are each corner, there could be some really awesome gateway sculptures coming in off of Whitney at Third. And next slide. Oh, yes, so these, I saw in Quebec City, these were hung up high, they're metal, they're very thin metal, cut metal sculptures of people doing different activities, and we thought this might be a cool idea to sort of define Third Street with something that would be whimsical and fun, that would, that would represent the people who do various things in Los Altos. All right, next slide. Oh, wait, you know what, I think you, hold on, because I think you missed a slide back, back, one more, there. Okay, so there's this sign on San Antonio that says Downtown Los Altos Free Parking, so we thought this would be a cool call for art, where you could get some great people who do beautiful signage for the entry to the Third Street Art Walk. Okay, now you have to go ahead. This is a collaboration we did with the History Museum, and Maddie and I put together this presentation about public art and placemaking, and it's, it's a little long, but I would love you guys to check it out when you get a chance. There's a link, it's on the History Museum website, it's also on Arts Los Altos website, there's a link to it in the events page. So I just wanted to tell you about that. Next. So Arts Los Altos is, we've, we've, we've done a call for art, we've, we have a curated arts list. We're, we're just volunteers, we meet once a week, really helps to get things done. We've provided a variety of sculpture, murals, and lighting, interactive art, and most importantly, we've, can, we've been able to continue to collaborate with the Rotary Club, the History Museum, LACF, Chamber of Commerce, Kwanis, and LACF, and hopefully, we can collaborate with the Public Arts Commission. Next. So community is defined by its peoples, and we love to create meaning together and implement more art with the Arts Commission and the City of Los Altos. It's really great that we have so many people wanting to do this for our community, and we're so happy we've been able to implement quite a few murals and some other objects, but it's harder for us to do sculptures. So that's what we're here to sort of share with you, some possibilities to make that happen and work together. Yeah, and the Third Street Art Walk is just sort of a vision that would be really perfect to collaborate with, because there's a lot of places for sculpture along Third Street. So thank you. Yeah, thank you, guys. For the time, and really appreciate it. And also, we didn't really introduce ourselves, for those who may not know us. I'm Maddie McBurney, and. I'm Karen Zoker. And we're the co-directors of Arts Los Altos. We used to be on the Arts Commission a while back and spent eight years in your position, so we know what it's like to be an art commissioner, which is really cool. Yeah. So thank you for all you do.
Before you two run off, John, is it okay if anyone has questions? Are they allowed to ask questions? Did I lose John?
Yep. Yeah, absolutely.
So if there are any questions?
I wanted to, this is Hillary, I've lost my video, I'm in no Wi-Fi land, but I wanted to thank you both for coming and presenting. We really appreciate it, we really appreciate everything you're doing for Los Altos, especially as former commissioners. Could you talk a little bit more about your vision for the art walk?
Well, a lot of our installations are already right on Third Street, and we just thought it would be a way to bring community and, you know, have kind of an art focus in Los Altos. It was kind of an inspiration from when they used to do the Third Street Green. And when we talked to Anthony a while back, they were thinking of trying to do mural projects on Third Street during the Third Street Green. And then when we started Arts Los Altos, Sherry Scott was with us, and she, she kind of inspired this idea, and then we've been sort of focusing on that for locations for our murals. And also, it really depends on the property owner saying yes, and then we just said, why don't we just start, you know, trying to make Third Street more of a focus? That's just why we had that vision.
And I, this is, I was just going to make more of a comment, that the augmented reality art is a good idea. I know art, Miami Art Basel just ended, and they had a lot of augmented reality art, that's kind of like the hip new thing.
Yeah. It's going to be really exciting. Yeah, the paseo is going to be super colorful at night, and even in the day, it's going to, the pieces will be backlit with color, and then they'll have the augmented reality feature with technology. We're working with these two artists from San Francisco, and they're really nice. They just finished some projects in Palo Alto.
And the tech people here will probably enjoy that as well.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, do we have any more questions? No, okay. Thank you for coming and presenting. It's, you know, it's great to know what you guys are up to.
Yeah, and, yeah, anytime you guys have questions, just feel free to ask us, and also, we'll be always trying to keep in touch to let you know what we're doing, too.
Perfect, that would be really appreciated.
We appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, thanks. Bye, you guys. Have a great meeting.
Thank you.
I have to log off and log back on, just so if you see me disappear, sorry.
Okay. So after that, we have to go back to our agenda and look at meeting minutes. So John, I think we have meeting minutes from two meetings, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and one of those meetings, there's only two of us now, one on the phone, who actually, oh, there she is, attended, but I understand that others are, Jamie had said in our last meeting before the new commission that everyone is allowed to okay those.
Yep.
Approve those meeting minutes.
Yeah, even, even if you were not on the commission at the, during the meeting, you can still vote either way on it.
Okay, perfect. Um, does anyone want to, can we, let me ask this, can we make a motion, or can someone make a motion to approve both sets of meeting minutes, so that we can get through them quicker?
Please.
I moved to approve, I made a motion to approve both sets of minutes.
I second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Yes, John?
We do, since we are meeting virtually, we do have to do a roll call, vote.
Okay.
Sorry.
You're, you're, you are muted right now.
Who is, Lucy?
Lucy, yep. All right.
Okay, John, roll call, please.
I will, I will call the roll. Chair Waldman.
Yes.
Vice Chair King.
Yes.
Commissioner Couture.
Yes.
Commissioner Corrigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Jan Gignan.
Yes.
And Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
All right. Okay, and then now we're going to need John again, because we're going to need some pictures. Here comes the exciting, exciting part, I'm very excited to see our call for art, we're going to discuss placement from our call for art, that was, if I remember, September 30th, where we okayed things, and we have a subcommittee that has gone off and looked and found some spots for us, so I will let that subcommittee take it away and talk about where they think we should place some of our new pieces. I'm not sure who wanted to, to talk about it. Can we have everyone on the subcommittee raise their hand, maybe to identify yourselves? You got it?
Tony, it's Anita Enander, do you have a minute?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I was going back through some old minutes, and I was trying to sort something out, and you've been around the commission for a while now. Normally, we rotate chairs every year, and it looks like Coljeet's been chair for about at least three years. Can you tell me what the?
Wait, Anita, that's, that's the Finance Commission. Coljeet's on Finance.
Inadvertently unmuted.
And actually, if anyone cares, I think our commission, and John can correct me if I'm wrong, we've had a number of people who had the chair for two years, if not longer, but.
Yes, Monica's been, Monica's been, has been chair for about two months now.
About a week, yeah.
Already trying to dethrone me, all right. Let's go back to our call for it, okay. Subcommittee members, who would like to go ahead and walk us through where we might be able to place some art?
Terry, please.
Terry, you want to take a spin at it?
Oh, can we look at the chart?
Yep, let me, just let me know what you want me to.
But.
Let me know what you want me to share, because, so, okay, here's the.
So I sent you an email, there we go, thank you. So we went and looked at, actually, a lot, there are a lot of places in Los Altos that don't have art, and we were trying to think about that thought, because we've been on enough of these meetings previously, where people in the public have asked for art, like at Grant Park, et cetera. So we tried to, you know, as much as everybody wants to have art everywhere, we only have so much money, so we tried to make a concerted effort to sort of spread the art around. So we looked at the new spots and questions below, but we thought that One-Eyed Jack would be really good at Los Altos Avenue and Edith, and that's the northwest corner. It's, it's a big sculpture.
It's a bunny, it's a bunny.
Is that the bunny or the cat? Okay, yeah, that's good.
That's the bunny.
Yeah.
And it would work.
I can scroll down and show a picture of it, possibly.
Oh.
Let's see here. It is.
That's part of it.
Oh, that's great there, that would be great there. That's a good choice. Yeah, that, that would do really well there.
Yeah.
Yeah, agree, good job, yeah.
So going back up to the list again, sorry, John.
No, no.
127 First Street has a lot of construction going on right now, so we thought we would wait to put in, because we figure it's going to be at least another year, it's, it's a building, commercial building, and those take forever to finish.
Yeah.
Then 197 First Street, we thought that elements of separation would work pretty good.
John, can you, Paige, sorry, Terry, to jump in, can you, Paige, just remind us which piece that is?
That's the one we wanted three of, right?
Yeah, there's three of them, yes, and there's spots for free. I mean, there's good places for free in that spot.
At the same spot, at the same location.
Well, you know, along the, along the meridian, between the sidewalk and the street, yeah.
And, and John, can I ask, did we reach out to the artist, and the artist will lend us three of them for the loan price of two?
I will have to double check on that, it, double check on that. Give me just a moment. Terry, it's, it's these ones, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Right.
And it's going First Street in where, I'm sorry?
Well, the, it's actually 197 to like 213, or something like that.
Can you give me a landmark of where is that roughly?
If you, just a moment.
John's going to bring up a map.
I can bring up.
Okay. Or if someone can tell me a store or something.
Do you want to start at Centrela, Terry, and then go down in succession?
Yes, yes, thank you, Jenna. She knows better than me.
So it's by Centrela?
Yeah, start there, put them in succession along first. Was the second one in front of, oh gosh, I forgot which retail space it was. Is it Spot Pizza? No.
No, Spot Pizza.
No, that's across the street.
Yeah, John's got it.
Oops, or skips, or whatever, yeah.
So where, are they going to be in the grass, or where are they going to be?
No, it's further down.
Further down.
Sorry, yeah, I guess it's not.
Further, towards the old post, further.
Oh, okay.
Further.
Closer to the post office or mail center?
Well, closer to Safeway, there, that spot.
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah, what is that space? It's like a new tech thing.
Oh, the flying car thing.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, that's an interesting, so, but, but they're not going to be all together, it sounds like.
No. They'd be graded by, I don't know, two feet each or something, three feet.
Oh, but, but they are all, but they are all in the same location.
Correct.
Oh, yeah, oh, that's a great spot, I like that spot.
Sorry.
There you go, John, yes.
Oh, perfect.
Yes.
Oh, that's a, I think that's great, because that's a great thematic tie to that place.
And also, there's that new shop across the street, so I thought it would, you know, people.
Boveté, yeah.
Yeah, people.
Exactly, good choice, yeah.
Yeah, and that will get the younger folks out there to look at those pieces, I think.
Yeah.
If I, if I could, if I could just interject really quick, one thing we may need to consider is how much space there actually. If I, if I could, if I could just interject really quick, one thing we may need to consider is how much space there actually, how much space there actually is here. Um, just.
We, we have the measure, we have the measurements, John.
Okay.
And I had a tape measure, so I kinda looked at it and I thought it would be okay.
Perfect, we'll just, we'll just need to, because it looks like this is a, uh, no, I can't tell.
Stafford.
Yeah.
That looks like underground access right there.
Yeah, that's what I'm curious about.
Yeah, but not along the, not along, there's one part that's not.
Okay.
So.
Excellent.
Well, I think that's a great location.
I think it's a great location. Will we be able to eventually make a motion that they can be placed there if, if it's physically possible, otherwise we just push it to next month to figure out where to place them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Shall we go back to the list then? We're making John work for his money today.
That's alright. If we weren't on Zoom, I could, uh, do this a lot easier.
I know.
Then the next one was, um, Main Street and Foothill. Yeah, that would be the heart. And the reason we thought the heart would be good there is because that's the first, that's one of the three entrances on that side of Los Altos, and we thought it would be nice to have a heart coming into Los Altos, because so many of us do like Los Altos, we just thought it would be a good spot.
So is that, John, is that the spot where we had Conversation Piece?
Yes.
Yes.
So, um, and Hillary's been around long enough too, that the only problem is Conversation Piece was about the same height and it got lost on that corner because that building is so big. I, I agree that it would be great to have something like a statement piece there, but I just think it's, it's gonna get lost.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I, I like the point too, but again, that's why Conversation Piece got moved, because it was seen as getting lost there. Can we kind of put a pin in this and think about it? It still might be nice to have it there. People might, people might pose with it, I don't know.
I think, yeah, I think you're right about that.
What, what about if we put it in the median, so not like where Conversation Piece was, but in the median where the old tree used to be?
That's an interesting idea.
John?
Then you can't take, you mean between the two traffic patterns, because then you can't take pictures of it, you can't go out in the middle of the street and.
You can't take pictures of credit, yeah. You wouldn't want it.
We could always try it there, and if it, we feel like it's lost, move it, but, um, let's, let's at least think about it. I think it's, I see the point of it. We just don't want it to get lost, yeah.
Yeah, makes sense.
Alright.
Okay, going back to the list again.
And I will say Conversation Piece, Conversation Piece was a little bit more subtle. This is a big heart, a big chunky heart, it may not.
Brighter colors, I think.
It may not get lost, so, okay, but just, yeah, so, good thought. Anyway, keep going, moving on or going on.
Oh, yeah. We actually had a lot of fun doing this, going out and looking at everything and.
Oh, good.
We did.
You did, you did great.
Fourth and back and forth and. So, Main Street and Third. Um, this has to be a pretty small, because there's not a lot of room there, so we were kind of lost. We were, we really didn't know what to put there.
That's okay, don't worry about it.
Go back to the next, you could go to the next. It's cramped, there's two, there's benches, there's.
Is that, that's by the bank?
Trees, yeah.
That's by the bank, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
So we really thought Cosmic Bliss should go at El Monte and Springer Road. There's a very good open space for that. It's again another gateway into Los Altos, and it's a big piece, so we thought that that would be a great spot for it.
And that's where the blimp was, John?
Yes.
I, I think that would be a good move, because this one's got some bright red on it.
Yeah, that's true, that's fun.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, then.
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
Heritage Park, Heritage Oaks Park. Okay, so west of the playground, Norman Moore, right, I think is what I wanted to put there.
So west of the playground, further away from Portland?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, no, sorry, excuse me, more on Portland.
Okay.
When you're coming down Portland, you don't wanna, you don't wanna, yeah, you don't wanna get into where all the, well, there's the playground and then there's the soccer field, so we wanted, well, pretty much on the, there's.
There's like a wider path.
Yeah, there's.
Well, there's a path and there's a bench, there's a bench where they put the, they put the watershed plaque on.
Right, yeah.
So you wanna put there, okay.
For it.
Yeah, and which one is going there, which one did you propose?
Uh, go back, look in that.
John's gonna bring it up.
Or just if you have a description too. That's a good point, I'm happy to get something there.
Yeah, there's nothing there, no.
There's nothing there, yeah. And it gets a lot of people there.
And it's a, and it's a pretty bright pop of color, colors.
That's great, and that's relatively kid-friendly, that kids can be on. Perfect, that's great.
Because Jenna has kids, we tried to think of the kids.
Yeah, yep.
The two areas, Grant Park and.
Well, yeah, they've been making cameras tonight.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're talking back.
That's great. Yeah.
Or even like. To see that big oak tree to the left of it, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, maybe on the left of that.
Yes.
Because people don't wa, yeah, that'd be great. That's very visible, that's good.
And it's visible from the street as well, which is really nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
One thing we'll have to consider is, um, I know with Oaks, you're not supposed to put anything in the drip lines, we'll have to come outside.
Yeah, there's a lot of room, John.
There's a lot of room, yeah.
Yeah, where your cursor is, to go to the line.
The, the one thing in that location is I'm gonna assume, other than putting some solar lights, we won't have lighting on the piece.
No.
But, if that's what, yeah, that's do, that's livable.
Yeah. And we can, if we agree to, I think we can go out there and y'all probably looked at to really situate it, so it doesn't kind of look random or get blunt now. Yeah, just kind of situate it well, so.
And then everybody really wants us to do some work at Grant Park, so we found a couple of what we think are the perfect sculptures for Grant Park. Wilma Reeves, and you just took it away from me again.
And then, the stone dog, right?
Oh, right, oh, they'll love that, that's great, they'll love that.
He's cute.
He is cute.
Yep, and then, get down to.
Kind of in the back, right, on, uh.
Back, you walk around the circle where the kids all go into play, et cetera. Yeah, out of the way of, you know, it, it, it wouldn't be in anybody's way at all. But it would be, it's a good, because there's a lamp there and a light and it's kind of the front of the park, sort of.
Okay.
Let me.
So is it, is it a spot that's inviting for people to take photos, or the kids will want photos with the dog, hopefully?
I think so.
Be on, be on the dog?
Because, I think so, a lot of people walk their dogs there too, so.
So the dogs will pee on the.
Oh, it, it actually is kind of a stand. So, and it's stone, so how can you get?
Yeah, we can just hose it down.
He's gotta know, you know.
Yeah, right there is your, there was your cursor.
Right here?
Yeah, yep, to the, to the.
And then where would the other one go, were you?
Out in the front.
So.
Okay.
So along here.
East, yeah, not in the lawn area, on the left side.
Yeah, over here.
I would like where that rock is, yeah.
Oh, that's kind of nice. Where the, that would be where the dog goes or the tall piece goes?
Dog.
The dog.
The dog, okay.
Yeah, how high are these going to be put from the ground, the sculptures?
So usually, what the city does will, will build just a very flat concrete pad where there's not one right now. Um, and then it'll just sit on top of the concrete pad. So most of these will not be raised up. If, if we need to do an elevated base, then we have to look into hiring somebody to come in and do it for us. That's beyond the, the capabilities of staff.
The reason why I ask is because somebody mentioned about the dogs and if it was above the dog's capability of messing with it.
Well, but I, I think if it's also on the ground, then children can touch it, they can maybe be placed on top of it, have their parents take pictures, hopefully.
Made of stone, it won't be hurt by.
No, they look very polished, the, I mean, when, when it's delivered, if it's sharp, we definitely will tell the artist to take it back, but as long as those stones are polished and safe for people to touch, it should be okay.
And I believe that, I believe that we had our former commissioner went to the studio and felt like they were pretty safe, right? So I think we, we feel like we've kind of vetted these.
And are they glued to each other? These stones will not fall away from each other, right?
I don't know how the artist connects them, but I'm gonna assume, he's, I know it's a he, he sells a lot of these, so I assume they are connected and they're robust.
Because, for safety purposes.
They look like they have cement between them.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think we'll expect some wear and tear over the years, but we should get some, you know, usage out of, some, some good usage. And I think they, I think they'll be very popular and is a great spot for that, really, really well chosen. Yeah.
Good, thank you. Is there a dog, there's not a dog park in Grant Park, is there?
No.
No.
No, but a lot of walking of dogs happens there, for sure.
Yeah.
And then back to my list again for the other side.
And then the other one is right there in that corner, Terry, remember, holds in Grant Park.
Round corner, yeah.
Yeah.
In here?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, that's a good spot, too.
Yeah, we tried to stay away from lawn because John had mentioned that lawn kind of is part of the garden.
It's a no-no.
Very much appreciate that.
It'll be.
Well, you all did a great, I think you did a really good job placing these, really well done.
Thank you.
Where, um, for the, the one that is, um, going in the other spot in, um, or perspective, new spot in Grant Park, which sculpture was that again?
Uh, it's called Wilma Law.
Yeah.
Is that the tall mosaic?
It's also stones, but we wanted to try to, you know, if, if we're gonna do stone and the dog, we thought it might be good to have stone. And also, we think that the kids will like to touch it.
Yes.
Yes.
Agreed.
And it has some bright colors too.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't normally comment, but you guys have a stunning knowledge of the city.
Yeah.
Okay, for our newer commissioners, I've never heard a new.
Say that before.
So then.
We really did a good job.
So then the next one, Mary Mead Park, um, so, uh, near the tennis courts, we'd love to have that Serengeti dog.
Is that the warthog?
Yeah.
And that's where they?
Because there's also a lot of kids at that park too.
That's true.
There, there were more kids at that park than any other park.
Oh, that's a great place for it. So would it be near the playground area?
Uh, we, we, can, John, can you?
Yeah.
Kind of near like the bathrooms, the.
Yeah, we, Jenna, we found that worked pretty good, I think.
That's good, we almost have then kind of animals in three different places, which is great, actually.
Yeah.
Uh, okay. So here's the tennis courts, the restrooms are here.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to see, Ariel.
So, it, it, there's a spot, see where it says Mary Mead Park? There's this, oh, okay, good, John, thanks. There, yeah, okay, back, yeah, there you go, right here. Because that, that, it's, it's not too lonny there.
Okay, great.
So are you thinking by the three trees on the right-hand side?
Yes, right, the ivy and stuff.
Okay, my only comment is because of the color of the piece, it, it may get lost against those, um, those trees.
You could put it out in the front on the trees, the street side of the sidewalk, but that's lawn there, so, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to upset John and the lawns.
Right, and if it's under trees, you will get a lot of bird poo on it.
That's true.
Just for your information, since I'm very acquainted with birds.
Well, we can go out and look and put the exact placement, but we thought that'd be a good one.
Just to.
That's a good, yeah.
Because they are messy. I love them, they're my favorite creatures, but they are messy.
Yeah, I, I like the location. Again, my only concern is the color, because I remember, I think we talked about this last meeting, that there used to be egrets on the corner of Main and Edith, and John will remember this, and they just faded in, there's, there's trees and the rust color of the egrets just faded into the trees, and it's such a cute piece, I, or a nice position, so cute. I hate for it to be lost, but if there are a lot of kids there, I think they will want to interact with it and it will just override the fact that it's getting a little lost there visually.
And I think that's it, isn't it, John? Oh, then we talked about new spots and, you know, we talked about, uh, down Fremont Road, uh, going towards Sunnyvale, there's all kinds of spots. We talked about, uh, maybe doing the median on San Antonio Road further down, but we couldn't really find a spot that we liked. Uh, we talked about, uh, you know where the bike, the bike, uh, you're going.
That was a good spot, yeah.
After New, and there's the bike path. Uh, going to Palo Alto, there's a good.
Oh, yeah, that's a great spot. That's a good one.
What else, Jenna, were we?
That's a really good spot.
Oh, that, going into the high.
Do we have to be careful that that isn't part of the Hetch Hetchy, um, property?
Yeah, we would, if, if we, if we want to put something there, we would look into where exactly is the, uh, it's the, owned by the San Francisco.
Water, okay.
Yeah, whatever they are. Uh, but there, there's possibly are spaces up there that we could put it at. You're talking about along here, correct?
Yeah, right at the entrance, there's a bench.
Yeah, right at the entrance to the bike path there.
Yeah.
Are, are we talking about, are we talking about future?
Yes, right. You, you.
Maybe would be good there is, um, maybe instead of sculptures, if we could, or some kind of temporary installation would be good as well.
That's a good idea. That's a good thought.
Yeah, you wanted us to look at other spots.
Yeah, no, this is great, this is great.
That's great, that's just a really good idea, because, um, Monica's right, yeah. Because it, it's mean, it's kind of both barren and inviting at the same time, and it would be a great spot. It's really well-used, I mean, people use it a lot.
Oh, yeah. At rest, but you, you, you get to Los Altos Avenue, you get to that, and you have to sort of stop to kind of.
Yeah, it's true.
Stuff, so it would be.
Yeah.
But when you come out of there, you always have to look for traffic, so.
Yep. Well, let's keep that as a, as both a permanent spot and also, like Monica said, it's something we could do a temporary installation.
So that's kind of our summary.
That's great, great work.
Thank you for listening.
Um, John, do we need to do a, um, a vote on each piece? How, how should we do this?
Um.
Maybe each piece?
Well, I, I think we could do them as a group. I think there was one that the commission maybe, you know, or at least, you know, have some discussion if there's, if there's, uh, seems to be consensus on, on a bunch of them, then we can do them all together. I think there was at least one that, uh, the commission maybe wanted to talk about.
But, you know, I, I, I think my fear is that the heart will get lost, but I think if the majority of people want to give it a try, I, I will go with the majority and let's give it a try, so if that makes it also easier just to vote in the whole bunch.
Can you remind me again, is it the red heart or is it the silver heart? It's the red one, okay. Maybe that will help, I don't know.
I think it's a, I think because it is a different piece than Conversation Piece, that it's chunkier and red, that it, maybe it won't get quite as lost. Conversation Piece is a little more subtle, so.
I think it's important to have the heart for its connotation. We have a heart, that it's a place of love.
Right.
So much.
That's a good point.
Yeah, we don't have anything like that in downtown.
This is welcoming and it's showing, we have a heart. This is welcoming and it's showing, we have a heart for you, join us. You know, it's very welcoming and loving, and I think it's a beautiful symbol for a town, which we lack in the world today, so it would be great.
Okay, so then, um, can I ask somebody to make a motion to, I don't know, I wouldn't say accept, but to accept the placement that has been recommended by the subcommittee of the pieces from the call for art?
I'll make a motion to accept the placement from the subcommittee on the call for art.
I second, if I may.
All right, John, you want to do a roll call?
Can I, um, just ask that it's, was it, I thought I heard in the motion to accept the recommendation, contingent upon, uh, going out with staff and, and the subcommittee to.
Yes, you did.
Yes, you did. You did hear that, yeah.
Hillary said that.
Yes.
Yes. And I'm happy, I'm happy to do that.
And, and that any, uh, any, um, if there's one that, or if there's a piece that we're not able to, to place, we'll bring it back to the commission.
Okay.
Right, Jen, right. You know, Hillary said that all very quickly.
That's what I heard.
Under my breath, sorry.
All right, John, you want to do a roll call?
I have all those.
You're on the same page, that's good.
Um, yes, I, I'll do roll call. Chair Waldman?
Yes.
Vice Chair King?
Yes.
Commissioner Corrigan? Commissioner Corrigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Couture?
Yes.
Commissioner Jan Giggian?
Yes.
And Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Yay, great job, subcommittee.
So, John.
Possibility.
For our new, um, and, and I thank you for, for being new and, and going out there and looking at all the possibilities and where to put stuff. And John, what is next steps? You will contact the artists. How, how does this work for new members?
So I think what we'll do is we'll, um, we'll, two things will happen. Um, I will, I'll start reaching out to the artists as one. Um, and two, I'll, I'll work with the subcommittee, we'll go out, we'll, um, hopefully have some maintenance staff there to, to say, okay, this is where it's going to go. Some are going to be really easy because, you know, th- there's already concrete pads out there, uh, great. Uh, you know, for example, the, the Springer and El Monte one, but we know where that's going to go because there's already a concrete pad. Um, but the ones where we may need to put in a new pad or we may need to, to look, um, we'll, we'll figure out exactly where the final p, the final, uh, location is going to go. Um, and then I'll start working with staff to, to prepare the site. Um, I'll, at the same time, be working with the artists to schedule when they can come and install the pieces.
And also for our new members, this could be a multi-month process. It's not going to be
Yeah.
mid or end of January when they're all going to show up.
Yep.
I get it.
One of the things we, we, we like to do is make sure that we are accommodating to the artists as much as possible, who are generously coming and bringing their pieces to us.
And then for those who schedules, uh, it, uh, work, if, when, if and when the artist comes, anybody, anybody from the public is allowed to, to come, but it's always good for a couple of commissioners to show up and thank the artist.
Do we have an opening of these when they are put up?
But John will send email. Uh, do we have an opening? Um, generally not, but, but John does send, usually send an email telling us this is the day and the time that the artist is going to be.
And we do try to get publicity going, either the town crier or to have some publicity out for it.
Yep.
And it was fun to watch the, um, egret poppy sculpture. Hillary, Monica, Janet and I were there. It was a lot of fun.
And that leads to my next question, um, about getting publicity. Um, I, I guess one of us can call the town crier, but should we be going through, Sonia's still with the city? Should we be going through the city, John?
Yeah, we can, we can coordinate it and, uh, make sure that we're, um, announcing it on the city's social media channels, we're, we're reaching out to the town crier and letting them know as well.
And, and the reason I ask that is, um, Hillary spent time writing up stuff for the murals and gave it to Sonia, and we've never seen anything happen with that information.
Okay, let me.
We can take that offline and follow up with you.
Let me, let me follow up on that, yeah.
Well, I think we'll, we're going to talk about social media later, so we can also talk about that maybe later, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we have a bunch of sculptures. It may take a few months, but yay, we're going to.
Great, yay.
We're going to, we're not going to paint the town, we're going to sculpture the town. Awesome.
That's right.
All right, let's go ahead and look at our work plan for 2021, which is about to close in 2022. We'll have John bring it up.
And this has not changed since, um, the last, the last meeting when we talked about it, um, and then talked with the city council about it.
Okay. Good. John, did you want to talk about the subcommittees at all?
So, yes, thank you, uh, Chair Waldman. Yeah, so one of the things that I did want to talk about, let me, let me actually come off of, well, let me stop sharing. It's saying that my internet is unstable. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So, you know, at the last meeting, we, we spent a lot of time, um, us making assignments to subcommittees, um, and, and doling out, uh, tasks and responsibilities, which is great. Um, but one of the things that I did want to bring up is, um, after the meeting, um, I started thinking about it a little bit more, um, talked with our city attorney as well. Um, one of the, one of the aspects of the Brown Act, of which the, the Public Arts Commission is subject to, is that any, um, any standing committee, must comply with the Brown Act, which means that, um, would have to post agendas, meetings would have to be open to the public. Um, and so before I, before I go too far down that road, let me, let me just clarify, there's two different types of committees, uh, or subcommittees that we can use. Um, one is the, a standing subcommittee. And then the other is an ad hoc subcommittee. Now, the difference is a standing subcommittee generally, lasts and, and continues on and on and on. Um, it may generally last longer than a year. It keeps talking about the same subject, same topic over and over and over again. Whereas an ad hoc committee is, it's one, um, basically one project or one topic, and it has a definite end date, um, at some point. So for example, uh, let me, uh, um, you, we have, we had a, uh, we just had a, a subcommittee that did a fantastic job of taking the, the latest call for art and going out and coming up with recommendations on locations. If we presume that once the commission has acted or once the pieces are in, then there is no more need for that subcommittee, um, and it goes away. So it's an ad hoc subcommittee. And then the next time we do a call for art, we appoint a new subcommittee that then does the exact same thing. Um, that is a new ad hoc committee. And under that system, um, neither of those subcommittees, um, would fall under the, the, the Brown Act. Um, they could go and they could meet, um, in private, uh, talk as much as they want, not have to post agendas, et cetera. If we say, though, we're going to have a subcommittee that every time we, um, look at bringing in new art, whether it's a, a call for art or they're going to make recommendations on murals or things like that, now we're starting to get in, and it's going to be the same committee, and it's just going to keep going in, on and on and on, then we're getting into the standing subcommittee, um, territory. And so what, um, I, I wanted to bring up with the commission, and I don't think we need to do it right now, because I think the various subcommittees that we talked about at the last meeting, sort of already have that one topic or that one project that they're currently working on, which I think is, is just fine. Um, it's, if we continue to say, if we, if we just say, oh, we're going to have an arts outreach subcommittee, then we could start getting into, um, some sticky situations. But if we have the, that arts sub, arts outreach subcommittee that says, okay, we're going to take a look at how we can improve the commission's social media presence or, you know, whatever that is, um, sort of the, I'm looking at this, uh, this line here, then I think that's just fine, and we can put a status date or a, a target completion date, um, on it. And, um, then it becomes, i- it'll be an ad hoc committee. So I think we're, I, I don't think we're in any trouble right now, is what I'm saying. I think we're okay. And I think that the assignments that were made at the last meeting, um, we can easily transition to those as ad hoc subcommittees. And they will work on their project, come back with the recommendation, um, and at some point those will go away. And then when we have the new project that comes up, then we'll, um, we can a, appoint a new subcommittee. Does that all make sense?
Makes sense to everybody.
Thanks for describing that. I thought we were an ad hoc committee, so.
Yeah.
Cause I think the beginning is a solution and an end, and it was quick, well, not quick, but.
Yeah.
Quick.
Well, it'll, it'll be done when, when you help assist with the actual placement.
Yes, right.
And, and, and the people who helped pick the locations for the call for art, next time we do a call for art, you're more than welcome to be on that subcommittee, but it would be a new subcommittee.
Yeah, and that's, and, and, and Monica is exactly right. It, just because we have one ad hoc subcommittee doesn't mean that the next ad hoc subcommittee doesn't miraculously turn out to be the exact same individuals. That's okay.
Can I make, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Thanks for the help. The description of the two.
So what about the community center one? Do we reform then, the next time there's a call for art?
Yeah, that would, that would be my suggestion. So, um, you know, we, what, what Hillary is talking about, in this, this subcommittee, this is an example of an ad hoc committee lasting longer than a year. We usually, we say, oh, if it lasts longer a ye, than a year, then it's getting into the standing subcommittee. But, you know, in this instance, it's still sort of an ad hoc committee. Um, we appointed a committee that, that's looked at the art for the, the community center. Um, and they worked on bringing in the mural, the, the murals, the, the sculpture, and then the first, um, gallery. And so now that the, the gallery is done, the sculptures are in, I think there's still one or two little things about the murals. The subcommittee would still be talking about the, those aspects, um, especially until we get the, the murals finalized. And then when we start looking at the next call for art, what we would do is we would create a new ad hoc subcommittee, who would then go out and develop the plan and carry it sort of through to, to the end.
I think we better than vote in a new subcommittee because we actually have gone ahead and, close your ears, John, we, we have a plan for the next call for art. But you never heard us say that.
No. And, and like I say, it can be the same, uh, the same makeup, but this would be a new ad hoc committee. To, to then.
Hillary, I look like you're thinking.
Well, what, what's the con, so how do we handle conservation of sculptures? Is that one person then? Is that?
It could be one person. It could be one person. It could also be, you know, the, and, and that's another subcommittee that's done some, some good work is, is looking at that. If that subcommittee proposes, you know, comes up, develops and proposes a plan that the commission then can then implement, that may, um.
And then that's the end of that, then?
It would be the end of it, and, and then assignments could be made. It could be made to one person. If the commission says, you know, we need to have somebody who is dedicated to, um, every, you know, six months going out and looking at all the sculptures, that's an assignment that we can make.
Okay.
We would just be careful in how we, you know, we made that assignment, but that's certainly something we could do.
Okay. Okay, clear.
So like I say, the, I'll call it up one more time. The, the work plan has not changed any. Although I, I, looking at the top one, there's some new information that needs to be updated on there. But what we can do is, um, or what I can do is I'll go in where it says community center subcommittee, what I'll put is I'll actually put people's names, um, just so that we know, okay. Well, and I guess it'd be down to this one here. Um, we can put in the new subcommittee's names, um, who are in charge of that project. And that way we're tracking it and we're not, not.
Violating, okay.
Violating any, uh, any state law.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you want me?
Everybody else is clear on that? Yeah.
Can, can you scroll up? Because I, I'm, I'm interested in starting, uh, the slow search for gateway piece or gateway locations and breaking it out of the new art subcommittee, making a new subcommittee on it that, that I can join. Well, we can talk about that maybe in January.
Yeah, we didn't do one of those yet.
What does gateway art mean?
So gateway art would be putting a, a large artwork that we probably commission. We don't just buy in a location that, um, like an entrance into the city, like we were talking, uh, is it Maine and First Street? Having some, a big piece there. Something that says you are in Los Altos, or here you are.
Okay.
And, and actually I printed out the, um, downtown visioning plan has a, a mention of putting some gateway art into the city.
Like, would the heart be considered one of the gate?
No, no, you're, you're talking like a big piece, like an arch or something, probably something that's commissioned, yeah.
Right, right, thank you.
That's made specific for the location, not just a purchased piece.
And it might be something that we need to get community input on too, maybe. We never know.
Yeah, it would be a, a, a long process because as Hillary said, you'd probably want community input, and it may be, um, a more expensive piece than we currently have budget for, and we'd have to wait for more 1% funding. So it's probably a long process.
And would that be for keeps or just for a period?
For keeps. That would be something commissioned, yeah.
Okay.
That, that's why we'd want community input, because we don't want to put a giant arch in that's, ends up being an eyesore and people are unhappy.
But how will you get the community's reaction? Is there going to be a vote or?
That's, that's, we got to work that out later. This, Monica's just talking about beginning the process, saying it'll be a long process and.
Is this the first time this is going to happen in town?
Yes.
That I know of.
So it hasn't been done. It's something that Monica, that was part of an idea in the city envisioning process. It's to be kind of beginning, and we really haven't worked out any other details.
All right, thank you, because I'm not sure of all the history. That's why I'm asking, thank you.
There is no history, so.
Yeah. We're, we're going to make history.
Wonderful, I like it.
Are there any other questions about the work plan as is? Nope, I hear a resounding silence. Let's go back to the agenda for item number five. Two voices, one community poetry reading. Hillary?
Yeah, so we have rescheduled that to April, um, due, due to, um, one of the participants will be out of town, out of the country. So we were scheduled to April 24, 3:00 PM. We have booked a room at the community center, so that is all set. That, I don't really have, that's two, for those who don't know, that's a, um, a fantastic poetry program, a Chinese poet and an African-American poet. Um, he, they read each other's work, and then one is, translates it into Chinese. So it's a really, um, just a great way to bring poetry and language into our community. Um, so I think that will be, um, a good process. Um, any other questions on that? Then I wanted to add something to that.
Do you have a fixed date now or does?
Yes, April 24th.
April 24th?
Yes, 3:00 PM.
What, what day of the week? What what day of the week is that?
That's a Sunday.
Okay.
It'll be at the community center.
Oh, three reading. And have. Go ahead, sorry, Hillary.
Any other questions on that?
Nope.
And this this may not, I may have to bring this up the next time as an agenda item. But it occurred to me, I guess I had to bring this up as an agenda item the next time. But I was thinking maybe for April being Poetry Month, we could do a hometown haiku contest. Describe Los Altos in 17 syllables. Haiku contest could be fine. Do you want me to put that as an agenda item for January or?
Great idea, yes.
Yeah, that's cool. I like that.
We could print them out and put them along over by the sweet shop along that.
Yeah, and maybe get get somebody from the council to judge and Linden Tree in the library. And maybe offer a little Linden Tree gift certificate or something. Can we vote on that or something or? Or you want me to write it up or what? How do you want me to proceed, John?
Well, we can add it to to next month's agenda. And if you have some thoughts, then certainly draft something up and send it to me and I'll.
Okay, I'll draft that up in the weekend and then maybe can vote on them. Great, I think that'd be relatively simple and fun and engaging.
I love it.
Gets people involved. 4:00, 3:00 PM, you said, or?
April 24th, yes.
What time?
At the community.
3:00 PM.
At the community center.
Okay, thank you.
All right, our subcommittee on social media.
Yeah, so I'm on this committee with Janet and Jenna, I believe, correct? Yes, and I will Janet has done a lot of terrific research. I will let her talk more, maybe a little bit. But she's done a lot of research looking at different cities and areas around the Bay, their arts commissions and their social media presence. Part of this is just honestly, it's how to get people to know what we're doing. We are almost completely reliant upon the town crier, which is wild to me that we have to rely on a private institution called a newspaper to do this in this age and and in this area. I've had a tried to kind of work with the city with their social media process. I know they have a process. I reached out to Sonia again and I haven't heard back. But we wanted to get a research, some idea of what other areas in the Bay Area do. And so Janet did quite a bit of research on that. I don't know if John can bring that up. But Janet, can you talk a little bit? And you actually spoke with, I've spoken with at least one city manager. And I think our meeting with another one too, to talk about exactly how their sites run. Can you can you talk more about that, Janet?
So one of the things we did is we tried to identify kind of local cities that have art commissions or the equivalent and what their social media presence is. And this kind of gives you an overview of who are the cities that have social media presence, either by Instagram, Facebook. And actually, I learned that another city has Twitter. Every single city that I either email got an email response from or spoke with someone said that it's someone on city staff or somebody's whose job it is to manage the sites. And so just to give you a go run run down some of the comments I got from Cupertino. The city has a communications team that oversees Instagram and Facebook sites for the city. And and they work to promote the Fine Arts Commission. In San Leandro, that's the one where we have a meeting with the communications manager. Again, it seems like a dedicated position. And so we have a call scheduled for next Thursday for anyone who wants to join. Spoke with or received information from the San Jose Art Commission. One of the commissioners said that, again, staff manages all the social media. And I spoke with the Director of Culture Affairs for San Jose. Same thing, city staff maintains the site. One of the most interesting conversations I had was with the Public Art Program Director for Palo Alto. I think Palo Alto has the really probably the best sites, I think. And Elise DiMarzo said that the city staff maintains those sites. And she said that over the pandemic, those sites were fantastic in terms of keeping the public and community engaged and aware about what they were doing. And she also said that people reach out to them via social media. And and one of the things that we talked about was, you know, what's the best practice for managing the sites? And and they, like the other cities, believe that it's really best for someone, not the commissioners, to manage the sites for a couple of reasons. First of all, logistics. One of the cities, not Palo Alto, said that, you know, when you have a commissioner managing a Facebook site, for example, when that commissioner leaves, there's a lot of knowledge that goes away. And they had issues with passwords and what was the history and where to find documents. But but according to Palo Alto, they were also concerned about a single commissioner inadvertently becoming the voice of the commission. You know, responding to to questions, so you don't want that to happen. They were also concerned that it would be kind of a slippery slope where a commissioner in responding to a question and other commissioners are watching the site could be a Brown Act violation. If it's something that goes behind or before the commission. But she nonetheless said, if you can do it, it's fantastic because they use it as a way to get a call out to artists. And they have a newsletter. And she said, her words were, it exploded with the pandemic. It was a super, super great thing for them to engage with people. So so that's kind of the the quick overview.
So I think that this is Janet does said did really great work. And I think it really is beneficial to see where kind of our peers are with this. You know, and we kind of, I think we understand this is a tricky issue. I think we don't want as commissioners to be representing the, you know, be the voice or anything. But we do feel like the commission itself needs a presence and needs a way to engage with the community that is, you know, not the town crier. So I guess at this point, it kind of goes, the ball kind of goes back to the city's quarter. What what is possible that we can do?
Is that a question for John?
I think so.
Great question. And and one of the things that I'm going to take this down so I can see you all. One of the things I was going to say earlier is I am I'm curious the about not hearing back from Sonia regarding this. And so I'm going to make sure I talk with her and 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 figure out what's going on and what her thoughts are and connect her with the subcommittee who's looking at this so we can discuss further. Because I will admit, I do not, I am not a an expert in social media. And so that's why we hired someone who is. And so I will need to 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 make sure that the the subcommittee gets a chance to talk with her.
I think that's a good idea. I think that's the the logical next step. I guess what one thing and we can talk with her about it, we may have to talk to the city attorney about it, is even the commission getting its own presence, even if we don't run it? If she runs it, is that possible?
Well, I think.
Or is that something you don't know? We'd have to kind of run through the city.
And and I think it I think it is possible. Certainly, I I don't think that there's anything preventing a public arts commission social media channel. And so I.
But it would still need to be run by the city, though.
Yeah.
Well, and I and I tend to agree with Janet. I'm sorry, I don't know. I forget which city you were saying that you're talking with. I I tend to agree with a lot of the the suggestions and the thoughts. Just it's it helps with continuity and keeps you guys out of what could be.
Brown Act violations.
A sticky situation. And so, again, like I say, I I am happy to follow up with Sonia and and set something up for the subcommittee and her to to sit down and to talk and to strategize.
So John, for those of us who are not on the subcommittee, can we make sure this is an agenda item for our next meeting so that we get a report back? What you got, what everyone has found out? Okay, perfect.
I'm going to jump in and say it might be helpful when talking with Sonia too is just to kind of lay out the events and activities over the next few months the Arts Commission is going to be having so that she will have a notion of the kinds of things that we need to communicate. So the installations of all of these sculptures, you know, one at a time or in groups or whatever. The poetry reading, just just so that she can kind of wrap her brain around the kinds of things that the commission is doing that we need to be communicating about.
Right, well, she she has a schedule and I've talked with her before about when her schedule is. But again, it even if I send stuff off, it doesn't seem to appear. So but yes, that's a good point. We should give her kind of the overview. Yeah. And we'll do that.
And I think at some point, we'd like to have maybe some kind of unveiling for the two new murals in the community center as well.
That's true.
Yeah.
Yeah, we already talked about doing that as a separate activity, given what the timing ended up being on finishing the mural. So there shouldn't be a problem with just doing that.
Right, and we talked about doing that in conjunction with the video presentation. But I think that's further down the road, probably, if that gets done. I don't know if that's, you know, we could talk about that later, I guess.
Okay.
Okay, okay, all right, thanks, John, thanks.
Let's keep that as an agenda item for the next meeting. All right, so the item that that seems to never die, the community center subcommittee. Hillary, you want to give an update?
Yeah, so we we met and we are have are going to order decal signage for the gallery space. So instead of just having paper slapped up on the wall, it will have some decal signage. They are going to meet with John next week and put in that order. But the subcommittee picked out a font and kind of verbiage, and we're going to get that going. So hopefully that should get out, if not, right up at the end of the year, but pretty close into the new year. And that should look nice. So we'll actually say Los Altos Community Art Gallery. And then we have done the, we have developed the first call for art for the Community Art Gallery. I think the somebody has a document, if we needed to share it. But we have developed the call for art theme and then also kind of come up with a timeline for it. The call for art is going to be where I'm from. It's referencing that although we have a lot of people who are from Los Altos, a lot of people are not from Los Altos. And we got to want to get an idea of where they're from. Are you from near? Are you from far? Are you from a unique family situation? Are you from the mountains? Are you from the hills? Kind of leaving that open to interpretation, to artist interpretation. We have an application ready to go and we have a whole timeline. So we will try to get that show up. I believe that I don't have the dates right in front of me. I think John's putting something up and then mid-March. And that will then, I think it'll go up in April and it'll be up through October, correct? Yes. But I think it should be good. And hopefully we'll get lots of interesting work for it. And I think it's not too specific. I think it is a very kind of fits in with a lot of call for arts. And I think hopefully we'll get the community involved and we'll get a lot, get to know the community well for this call for art.
And going back to, since we still have a member of the community on the call, if you look at the first paragraph, it's pretty, as Hillary said, it's left for interpretation. It's I don't want to say generic, but it's it's very broad, like where are you from? It's not like what's what city were you born in? It's up it's up for interpretation.
Yeah, it can be that or it can be very broad. It can be very abstract, it can be very literal or very abstract, however the artist wants to interpret it. Yeah. Yes.
Not when you're done with this subject, sorry.
Yeah. Any other questions on that? Go ahead.
Exciting.
Yeah. So I think if we vote on that, we can get the application up and they call out, correct, Monica?
I hope so. I the question is, you know, John will say it has to go through city staff or, you know, city speak language and such. Yeah, for vetting.
Okay, do we need to vote on it or anything?
Well, I was going to ask Monica if you want to see if there's public comment on this item.
Is there any public comment on the item? On the call for art? Marjorie, you're on mute. Well, we'll give you one second.
Okay. Yeah, I'm very happy with that theme. It's general, yeah.
Good, good.
I thought the themes were going to be much more specific and only concerning Los Altos. And that's kind of what bothered me. But no, I liked this a lot. Thank you very much. Yeah.
We have the seal of approval.
Yes.
That's why I I asked you to stick around. I'm glad you you stuck through it.
Thank you. Yeah. Because I talked to other artists and they were worried about it too. So now I can tell them, don't worry.
And John, is it okay for the subcommittee to get in touch with Marjorie after the call goes out to to help get the word out?
I'll tell everyone I know.
Okay, okay, you let them you let them know that goodness is coming.
Okay.
Now, John, I think it goes back to what Hillary was asking a moment ago. Does do we need to vote on this or can we just proceed?
I would suggest voting on it. I I mean, I would leave it up to the the commissioners to determine how they want to best proceed. But I think if you want to move forward with it, certainly a vote would be would be worthwhile.
All right, can I ask for everybody other than Hillary and myself and Lucy, if they are comfortable and want to take a vote on this?
I am comfortable and I'm happy to make a motion that we take a vote on this.
Perfect. Does someone want to make a motion, maybe other than the people in the subcommittee?
I'll make a motion that we bring this to the staff to just make sure they were smith it correctly so that we can then send it out to all the places that we know that artists might be interested to participate and anybody really.
Yeah, it it does, they don't have to be an artist. I mean, everybody is an artist.
Everybody's an artist.
Especially in Los Altos, everybody's an artist.
Everyone has an opinion and everyone is an artist.
There you go.
And then I also wanted to make a point, and John will correct me if I'm wrong, that we as subcommittee, it's not subcommittee, as committee, commission members are allowed to make entries, we just can't vote on our entries that we make, correct, John? I think that's part of our new rules.
Yeah, I'd have to I'd have to double check and confirm that. I believe that's correct.
So we we can be artists as well. We just will not be able to vote, probably vote in our own pieces if if we have to vote pieces in. All right. Do we, John, do you want to do a roll call on the motion?
We we need a second on the motion first.
A second on the motion.
Okay. All right, as the only person in the world who is not an artist, I will do the roll call. Chair Waldman.
Yes.
Vice Chair King.
Yep.
Commissioner Corrigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Couture.
Yes.
Commissioner Jan Jigian.
Yes.
And Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Yay. Great. So I guess I will, we will work on getting that call for out. We can send it to Marjorie and we'll work on getting that to on the website and and all. It's exciting now. I think it should be a really interesting exhibit, so.
I think we wanted the actual call to go out beginning of January, correct, Hillary?
Yes, yeah, I have a date on my email. But I think.
I think like the fifth or something, fourth.
I think we have to run it through John maybe, but we can hopefully do that quickly and then get it out. So that'd be great.
It has to go through the city first, but that gives us like two, three weeks to to get through that process. Okay.
We have another one, the community center. I'm not sure if it if this would be a commissioner report or a subcommittee report or it'd be something that would take place at the community center about an art outreach. I guess that's an art outreach subcommittee. So would I, but it would take place at the community center. Do you want me to do that report later or?
John, John?
Why don't you start and maybe we'll, I'll jump in if I think it if.
Okay, you can tell me to mute. So the Art Outreach Committee is proposing that we offer to do a a, I guess it's a sort of painting, sponsor a painting class for the community at the community center in February. And Janet, so is that something we could talk about now or do you want to talk about it later? Do you have enough information yet?
So you're you're you're, okay, so the thought is the commission sponsors a painting class at the community center in February?
Yes.
I would say that's a different topic, which we would need to add to the January agenda.
It can't, well, okay, it can't be at a commissioner report. Why not?
Well, if if you're wanting action from the full commission, we have to put it as an agenda item, which we don't have on this agenda.
That's really going to hurt our timeline.
We could have a special meeting.
Oh, let's have a special meeting. Let's get John back some more then. Oh, let's have a special meeting. Let's get John back some more, though.
John, what is your schedule next week?
No comment.
He has no comment.
Okay, so.
From now till end of the year.
So basic, so, um, Janet, can you, Janet or Jenna, can you provide the details real quick, just so know what we'll be having a special meeting on in a week?
Sure, so there's this group called Paint the Town, and we bring them in, and what they do is they provide all the materials, uh, use all the paint, the brushes, and they have an artist come in and they show up a piece of art, and then the artist will teach you how to paint that, and it's a really successful program. Corporations do it. You don't have to be an artist and you can walk away with a piece of art that you can put in your living room. And the co- we could talk about costs, I guess, at the next meeting, but the theory was that we would do a pilot in February at the community center, which Jenna was able to, to get approval for that and, and schedule, um, and then offer it up to the community, and, you know, it'd be a limited number of people, like 20 people or something. We have to determine those details, but it's a way to get the community engaged with art, perhaps, you know, draw something or paint something that is like reflective of Los Altos, or not, we have to decide that, too, and, but that's kind of in and at show.
John, if we want to make the, um, February, anytime in the month of February, uh, deadline, if we have a quick 10 or 15 minute special meeting next week, does that work for you?
So if, if, um, yeah, so if you like, what I can do is, um, I will send out, um, some sort of poll with days and times to see when people might be available for a special meeting. It may include times, I'll probably include chunks during the day as well.
Okay.
I'm just trying to think of when I can, when I'll be able to send that out. I may not be able to send it out till Monday, but, you know, we can certainly schedule something for Wednesday, Wednesday or Thursday or Friday.
And then for our new, our, our new, uh, members, for a special meeting, the agenda goes out, what, the deadline is 24 hours in advance?
24 hours in advance, yeah.
Okay.
And it'll only be on that topic, just so you know, so we should.
It's bounded short and sweet.
Yes, yes, okay.
Appropriate and helpful if, you know, our committee, Jenna and Hillary and I prepare like a one-page summary.
Yes.
That would be super perfect.
Yep.
Okay. And let's make sure we have kind of the number, financial numbers on there, too, so.
I can do that.
Okay.
You know, one, one of you should touch base with John about how to frame the proposal or how to, and how to frame the motion, because a couple of people knew to this, and a little extra coaching would probably be in order.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for the indulgence and guidance on that. We will do that, then.
Yeah, and, uh, piggybacking off what Anita said, I think when we do motions, they, they're supposed to be very specific, are they not, John?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
But, and, and I'm, I'm happy to help, um, as, as the, to draft, sort of frame the, uh, the discussion in the, the, the topic.
Okay, perfect.
Great, thank you.
Next, we've got our commission's schedule. You want to pop that on the screen, John? Everybody needs to put this on their calendar for 2022. Just as this, this year, uh, next year, just as this year, no meeting in November, because the fourth Thursday is Thanksgiving in 2022.
Yeah, so.
Just the schedule?
Yeah, so once, once the, uh, once the commission sort of looked at it and, and signed off on it, approved it, um, I can send these dates out. All of them are the fourth Thursday of each month, um, with the exception of November and December, um, sort of like we are doing today. Um, we, we split the difference between those two because of the holidays that, um, they typically fall around, um, and have the, the meeting in December. Um, one date for potential consideration is the February 24th date. That is during, uh, the winter break for the schools, so, um, I think we have a, at least two commissioners who may have, um, kids who may not be in school, um, at that time. We can keep at that date. If commission wants to move it, uh, happy to do that as well.
I'm, I'm going to ask a personal question of those who have, uh, younger children in school, um, if, do you think you will be going somewhere, I guess this is a personal question, would you like the date, uh, changed? Would it be more advantageous to you for the date to be changed? Does, is that bad if I ask them to actually identify themselves, John? Is that like?
No.
I'm happy to.
I think how you can ask it is, is would you prefer a different date?
Okay, we, thank you, thank you, Terry. Would you, yeah, I, I used to manage, I mean, you can't ask about children or, or anything. Um, would you, with those of you who may have a conflict, would you prefer a different date?
No.
I don't either, no.
I don't either, no.
Moms don't count.
Grandma mom, I'm a grandma.
My, my cats may want to take vacation that day, but, okay. John, thank you for, for bringing that up, and I also know, um, March can also be a sticky month because some schools have, um, time off in March as well. Do we want to look at that date as well?
Yeah, that's, I did not look at the spring break calendar. I apologize for that.
It doesn't hit, and it doesn't affect me.
Okay.
I'm here that day.
Yep.
I'm here every day.
And I was going to say, there, there is the, the, the chance, the possibility that we will still be meeting, uh, virtually in February, um, and so that may make it easier for, um, people who may be traveling around that time.
Yeah. Um, any feedback on that? Are you allowed to talk about that, or would that be coming in in the, uh, announcements from city staff?
For the, the, the virtual meetings, I, I'm happy to include that as part of my, uh, report out and, and announcements from the staff, if you will.
Okay. So then, do we need a motion to accept the dates, um, for the calendar year of 2022 for our meetings?
Yes, please.
Do you want me to make a motion? I can make a motion, all right. Um, I make a motion to accept the calendar 2022 dates that John has provided us for the Public Arts Commission meetings.
These will be for your, technically for your regular meetings?
For your regular meetings, thank you. I, I meant to say that.
Of course.
I second the motion.
All right, John, you want to go ahead and take a, a count?
Yep. Uh, Chair Waldman.
Yes.
Vice Chair King.
Yes.
Commissioner Corrigan. Commissioner Couture. Commissioner Jan Jigian.
Yes.
And Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Okay. John, do we have any information and announcements from city staff?
Sure, um, you know, a- as, as was asked just a minute ago, regard, if I have any more information regarding the, uh, meetings, um, the, the city council this past Tuesday did, um, extend the emergency declaration, uh, that we have been under for, gosh, almost two years. Um, and a- as part of that, then, is continuing forth with virtual meetings. Um, under the, the new state law that was passed, the city council has to, uh, adopt that every 30 days in order to continue to hold virtual meetings, um, and so it will be on their agenda for the January, their, their January meeting, uh, to consider, um, until the, until the council decides we're going to, they're going to go back into person, we're going to continue holding all meetings virtually, um, commission, council, committees, et cetera. The, the city council did, um, let us know that, uh, they would give us, um, we, we would, we would, they would give us a 30-day heads-up that they were looking to go back into in-person, um, to give staff time to make all the necessary techni- technological, uh, changes and adjustments, um, and so, um, presumably then we will, our, well, our January meeting will be virtual, um, and if the council adopts the, the, or extends the emergency declaration in January, then our February meeting will be as well. So, um, that's the best update that I have on that. Um, I know better than to presume to, to guess what the city council members are, are thinking, or when they, they may decide, you know, we've come out of the emergency declaration, or, um, we, we decide, we've decide, that, you know, they decide that it's time to go back to in-person, so I don't have any information or insight on that.
I, I assume that, um, the state is still doing things virtually, correct?
Um, well, I got.
Only I ask that because I assume cities will start bringing people back once the state, that's, the state.
It's more driven on a county-by-county basis.
Yes.
Okay.
It kind of depends what the county health officer says and does, and what the county board of supervisors do, and.
And.
Okay, but it sort of answers my question. We'll take lead from, um, a, an organization associated with us. We're not going to just break off and say, we're, we're going back to in-person meetings when no one else does.
Well, uh, you know, and, and, uh, Mayor Ender is correct that, you know, it's typically done by a county, county-by-county, but within counties, there are some jurisdictions that, uh, do decide to, to break off and, and have their, I think there are some in Santa Clara County that have gone to in-person or hybrid. Um, I know there was one that was doing in-person and then said, ooh, things are getting a little dicier, and went back to all virtual. Um, and so, uh, you know, I, I would imagine that our city council will evaluate and determine what is best for the community, um, regardless of what, sort of the other cities are doing. If, if everybody's staying virtual, but the council says, you know what, we're 100% vaccinated, um, we're, we're good, you know, the, the city as a whole is 100% vaccinated, we're good to go back to in-person, um, they may make that determination.
Okay. Sorry, I, I, thank you for the, the clarification.
Yep. Um, the other announcement that I had was regarding the, the sculpture Mother Hen. Um, I think I can't remember if I, I sent it out. Um, the, it has been, um, the, it's signed off on the, uh, the, the paying for it, um, and so I believe the artist has received payment for it, so the city now is the proud owner of an oversized chicken, that is very beautiful and, and wonderful.
A GMO chicken.
And so that, I, I believe that has all been finalized. Um, I'd have to confirm, confirm, but I, I believe it's, it's all, it's all done.
Yay, and then on, on that note, can we have, um, an, an agenda item on our next, not special meeting, but regular meeting, i- if it is, the purchases all the way through that we will discuss, maybe people come with ideas for placement?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Um, are we?
And can we add an agenda item, because I believe the conservation stewardship committee is done looking at all the sculptures, and they sent their, uh, report to John, but we didn't do it until Monday, so we couldn't make the meeting this time.
Do we want to make that part of our special meeting, or do we want to turbocharge our special meeting?
I think turbocharge a special meeting, unless there's a lot of.
Unless, unless there's something that's going to fall down one of our, our.
No, there's nothing that's going to fall down.
I did hear, I did hear back from, um, the artist of Dance With Me. I can, maybe I'll write that up and send it out, and we'll see what we want to do about that. I think we, yeah, I think we'll just put on the next agenda, probably.
That would be my suggestion. I think it'll be easier to find a, a shorter window in which everyone's available.
Agreed, agreed.
Can I, um, throw in two other things quickly? Um, I don't recall, I think we discussed this last meeting, I don't remember, Stomp, um, we got the, the loan has been extended, correct?
Oh, that's good.
I believe so, yes.
Okay. And then, um, back in September, I think we had asked Jamie to get in touch with the, a couple of the artists of pieces that had, the, the loan periods had waited, we'd gone way past them, including Jasper Priestess. Have we heard back from any of those artists?
Uh, I will have to check with Jamie, um, and I'll, I'll tell you what, we can put it on for the January agenda, so we can, uh, have a better update and, um, discussion on it.
Okay, perfect. All right, then I think I'm going to say we.
I have one.
Oh, Anita?
All right, I just had one follow-up question for the, um, community center people. There was talk when the photos were hung about getting, um, gallery glass to replace the highly reflective glass that we had in those frames. Is that something that's still happening, or is that by the by?
We, we discussed getting one piece to try it out, and then it kind of stalled. I think we were trying to figure out how to order that piece of, how do we order things? But I think we, we wanted to do, we thought about, let's get one with non-reflective and try a sample and see if that actually works, and I think that's where the idea kind of stopped. We have to figure out, how do we order that? At this point, I'm kind of, if the, if the new art's going to go up in March or April, I'm kind of willing to let it stay as it is.
Yep. Okay, I just wanted to, I wanted to ask because I was there today, and I just thought, so that's all.
Well, and we went a couple of different times during the day, and the worst time that, that, the glass is bad is in the morning. In the afternoon, it's not available, at like.
Oh, that's good, that's good to hear.
That's good to know, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
We do have in the, I did put in the call for art, if you're, if you're framing work and it has glass, use non-reflective glass, so we, we have that in there, so.
We have a member of the public who wants to say something, I think, but I don't know if, are we allowed to take a comment, John?
Hi, um, can I say something about the reflect, non-reflective glass? Can you hear me? Can't hear me, Ben.
Yeah, we, we can hear you. It's.
Okay, um, most, most artists don't, oh, sorry.
It, it's at the discretion of the chair, if you'd like to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Open public.
Okay, Marjorie, go ahead. Please go ahead.
Okay, I, it's just a thought. Uh, most artists that I know that use glass or, uh, plastic really in their art, don't like non-reflective glass, because it, it just is not the, you just put up with the reflections, because it mutes the artwork. So, and I'm included in that. I would never use non-reflective glass in any piece of art that I make.
Something new.
Yeah, but the pictures we're talking about are photography, right?
Yeah, especially photography. I don't think the photographer would like non-reflective glass.
I am a photographer, and.
And you like it?
These were hung and the pictures are basically unviewable in the morning.
I see, okay.
There's a lot of glare in that location. There's a lot of windows and the light comes in and hits.
Yeah, yeah.
It's really unviewable, so. It really depends on the circumstance.
Yeah.
I think in this instant, it might be a good idea. It's not a painting, so.
Okay, I, I think.
Well, I think we're not going to change it now, but yeah.
No, yeah, I think we need to get this going.
And as Hillary says in, in the call, we'll ask them to have non-reflective glass, and if they put it, put reflective glass, you know, so be it. All right, um, I think it's, what time is it? Hold on.
Almost 10, 10:00.
49.
It's 11 o'clock at night, it's 6:50. I think it's.
It's actually 9:50, thank you.
So Hillary, uh, is on the East Coast, so.
Yeah.
It's bedtime for Hillary.
Yes, it is bedtime for me.
We're going to let her go, and I'd like to adjourn this meeting. Um, do I need to make it official, John? But you're on mute, John.
You just did.
Okay. So, John will be sending out email. We'll see everyone hopefully in a couple days, and, um, have a good week in the meantime.
Next week.
Thank you.
Next week.